Jacket said that it was gonna cost two hundred dollars. So then we had to bite that on the backside. With that, I just got some trade-offs here. Just make it always free to again.
Well, the two hundred dollar cover is what we were talking about. You know, what the average of two hundred dollars was. And I told them it probably around two hundred dollars for the fifth whistle.
Those are old prices.
My issue is the discrepancy in it. It just makes it harder for us to explain if they're expecting one thing whenever. I don't even keep up with that number on how much the pipe costs Junior and Sean do. So that way, I don't give them, I don't give a citizen a number.
We just appear in a meeting tomorrow if they did. We run around two hundred dollars, a little over two hundred dollars for whistling with the rock and everything.
Now, the, the cost of the whistle plus the first load of rock, right? And the first load of rock runs approximately two hundred?
Uh, I believe the rock is one twenty-five a load.
One twenty-five?
Yeah, just the rock.
Yeah, cuz of whistles.
I believe they.
Yeah, but anyway, it was, uh, I told them it was roughly in that two hundred dollar range. So, but it was four hundred ninety some odd dollars when it ended up being.
That's what I'm saying, I don't even give them numbers just cuz I don't wanna lie to them. Uh, Sean and Junior keep up with that updated li- or updated pricing.
Yeah, I've had two within the last probably three months and I just call it in and they go out and give them an estimate. Let them know before they install it where it's gonna be because every.
Well, that's what they did here too. They told the people one hundred twenty dollars and they went ahead and done it, but.
Handbook, there's just some of the stuff, it's just random stuff. The first part is what they train everybody in Kansas for my job duty. Like, the first two pages are basically stating that. Uh, third page has some general state statutes, kinda gives you an overview of it. And then rolls in there and then like, I think it's the blue sheet, yellow sheet, yellow tab. States, kind of that, state statute that follows that. This is out of our management handbook and then the page right behind that yellow tab. Even gives you a list of what my duty should be.
You've given us a lot of reading material.
A lot of information.
Take that home and do that, but for the time being, I would just say that, I mean, you're gonna have to emphasize to your employees that they take orders from your chain of command, not from any individual commissioner. And, you know, we're gonna change your policy and this should be done in open session with the full board. I appreciate it.
And that's, I think it's protected by state statute is why I brought it.
Right.
That, do you, I don't think you can change that. Anyway, I just need an executive for whatever time I have left if I, or do you wanna do that?
Um.
I need ten minutes.
Four of what?
Uh, non-life personnel.
Okay. How much do you need, Cody?
Ten minutes.
Okay.
I can wait.
Oh, that's four, can, go ahead and.
I can either wait on whoever you got or.
Let's do that. We'll wait. Do you two have anything on that? Heather is coming to, uh, come in a little afterwards so we can take care of whatever issue we have here. Is Mr. Rickstrom here?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Pardon?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Come on up.
May I address before we get started, please? Uh, for the.
May I address?
Sure.
It's about this situation.
Well, I should say, how long will it take?
Just a couple of side books.
Okay.
Okay, we're here today to understand why Larry and my private property is on the county commissioner's agenda.
Ma'am.
She's talking to you.
Or our clerk.
For a clerk, what was your name again?
Sheila Price.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We are here today to understand why Larry and my private, private property is on the county commissioner's agenda and why we were not informed of this. We have sought legal counsel and in normal circumstances and with prior notice would have made arrangements for our lawyer to be present. Additionally, we would respect, respectfully ask that Jack Garner excuse himself from this discussion, decision-making and voting on this matter due to potential conflict of interest. All other forms of communications from us will come from our legal counsel. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Rickstrom?
Yes. Yeah, so, I don't know, I kinda heard back at court on this southeast quarter mile road. It's off the sixtieth between Quaker and Mostine. Guess I'm just trying to get some of the clarifications. Uh, there's a, on the county roadmap and parcels that shows it being a county road, but then, I mean, he called it a private drive. Just looking for some clarification. All the public information that I read and when I bought the property didn't show any otherwise that it wasn't a public road. So.
Do you have a cop, I mean, I checked with mapping and it shows that it is private. Do you have something that shows otherwise?
Uh, just for the zone.
There's a map right here.
I have some copies, could I bring them up to you?
What's that?
For him, I have some copies of some things, could I bring them to you?
Sure.
I know you, I shouldn't.
This is just, this is, um, the county map, just that showing quarter mile county road on the county map. Our deed that we purchased when we purchased and the deed now, uh, not showing any easement, not showing anything besides exception for a ten-foot piece of the road. And then these are the deeds of Gardner, King, Price, and Clevenger. I did not get extra from that, just grabbed these, sorry. Um, not showing an easement, not showing anything about that being a private road or anything. So, let's give that a care of.
When you as a broker know that that doesn't mean it's not private?
I know, I know, but you wouldn't, and I did hear after looking into some, I'm sorry, David, I don't know, sorry. I don't know, after some, um, discussion over the weekend, um, trying to pull some things together. I think it was in the minutes of twenty-two or twenty-three, after there was an ambulance stopped maybe. I, I don't have definite source for that. Um, but if it was in there, you would've thought somebody somewhere would've put some easement on them. And if it is a private road, you can't block it. So that's what we're trying to get to now, we need to go back and change all these deeds and do something, so.
You know, the deeds don't change, you just need easements.
They need to be filed on a note.
Yeah, and unless there's something to show us differently, everything I've looked at shows that it's private property and which would make it a simple matter.
So even on the county map?
Yeah, does the roadmap need updating?
Well, there are a lot of roads that are shown, um, the county map, but they're not, uh, county roads. They haven't been dedicated as such. And they're, they're on there and they're named for purposes of emergency services, but that obviously doesn't mean. When you've run into this before, there's a lot of properties that are landlocked because they haven't given, over to the cities or the counties or, uh, they haven't made that provision when they started parceling these properties out.
So even if our commitment says ten foot of road?
Ten foot of road, road, but whose road? Well?
I don't know, I guess.
No, I guess, uh, I don't know, yeah, it like, if it's on the county roadmap, then it's a county road, I guess, why I.
That's a wrong assumption, sorry, but it is a wrong assumption. There are a lot of roads, as I just pointed out, they're on there because they're there, there may be structures there and they had to, they had to put names on those streets for nine-one-one purposes, but. Jake, can you literally just say the conversation?
No, I mean, I think what you're saying is absolutely correct, just because something's listed on the roadmap doesn't necessarily make it county property or county right-of-way for a road. Um, and the converse of that is true, also that there will be roads that may show on a flat, right? If you go in a flat-out subdivision, they'll lay out roads in it. We do that all the time on vacation, trust me, when I buy a forty-acre, uh, lot, go in and have a platted, lay out roads, name the roads, but they never build the roads, they never build the houses, then somebody buys it, comes back and says, we wanna mix these roads. And the county typically vacates and gets them back. We've done that with roads, now that we're public roads, we vacate it because people wanna vacate it, right? To live around it, it still shows up on the map, but that's now a private drive that the county's vacating, they're interested in it. So, my assumption here is that somebody built the road back to these houses at some point, they named it for magic purposes, purposes, but it's not a county road, the county never took any ownership interest in that, had a right-of-way interest in it.
They did grade it and they didn't maintain it for quite some time?
They may have, but that still doesn't give us a ownership interest in it, still doesn't make it a county road. They may have been mistakenly grading a private drive that they probably shouldn't have been.
So, I mean, I don't have guaranteed, they said they maintained it for about twenty years and then they just stopped, so after twenty years.
Who said they would maintain it?
We've lived out at that place for twenty-seven years and they had maintained that road.
They'd be.
And the county graded, she knows, her father did it. Anyway, they made, they put out rock, they graded it, did whatever. And then, four and a half years ago, it all come to a halt.
And somebody said they would maintain it for twenty years?
We lived out there, Jack sold, I mean, I called up here, I called the county and said, hey, can we get some rock out here? The road's bad, and they said, yeah, sure.
Twenty-six years ago, when we bought our place and nobody else was even out there, we was told it was a county road and even on our deed, it didn't even state that it was a private road.
Yeah, it won't necessarily state it on your deed.
But how can one person control a whole road when there's five other people living there?
I agree with what you said earlier, you wouldn't be able to close it because of implied.
So we can, we're driving over five speed bumps that you need a D-nine dozer to get in and out on?
I know, I was on it.
Is that, is that, is that, is that, okay? You missed out if you was on a Saturday, you need to come back now cuz we got more of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm here to try to get along, but, you know, I, I can't control everybody that drives on that road.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, take your little car out there, you can't get over them bumps.
Or around them.
Or around them, there ain't no way.
I don't mean to be dismissive, but you're at the right place, but it needs to be upstairs. It is a civil matter.
So we know they can't legally block it, um, I guess we're driving around it, but then I guess, if they can't legally block it when they do or shut a gate, we have them arrested for trespass.
Well, you can't go by what I'm saying.
Well, I know, I know, I'm telling you, I know.
That has to be decided upstairs.
But you've got a kid that's spending a half a million dollars on a new home and wasn't told what he was buying when he bought it. Is the county gonna pay for his property, his home, and buy all of us out?
No.
Does the county want a lawsuit since we was all told that it was something that it's not?
Well, I personally wouldn't go by anything I'm told, I'd wanna see it on record. And when it comes to real estate, I definitely wanna see it on record that's in that register of deeds office. We thought might, we might need you, but I think we've got that settled, but you're welcome to stay. We were just wanting.
I mean, I don't think any of us needs to be up here arguing and carrying on over a damn road.
Myra, for reference, whenever they're talking about the four and a half years ago, I just remember Mr. Price was up here around that time. And like, everything that the road and bridge department has to verify if it's a road or not, shows that it's a county road. Like, our GIS mapping shows that there's a ten-foot easement and that it's a county road. Yes, it was maintained by road and bridge previously to Mr. Price's visit up here. That's all I know about it, but I know like, if I get a call right now on it and they ask me, all the information that I have shows that it's a county. There might be a discrepancy between mapping and.
Showing that it's a county road.
You got that from who?
That's on our GIS.
Oh. We need to.
Geez, and she just like, yeah.
So, the quarter mile road is what we're talking about?
Uh-huh.
What do you show in mapping that that's a county road or not?
Well, Sarah just walked right downstairs, she'll let me go ask her cuz we got somebody else, so, hold on just a second.
I've been in your office before about that.
Yeah, I know, we know which one you're talking about, I'll go check real quick.
So, is that part of the Orion system or is that?
I don't know what, part of what system that is, so, that's a good Sarah question.
That would be the easy solution if it, if it were. But to confirm that, I guess, we have to do some researching in the deeds office to, would've had to been easements to the county?
Yeah. So, yeah, there'd have to be some deeds somewhere saying. Do we know when that road was built? I mean, has it been there as long as everybody here has been there?
Mr. and Mrs. Price, do you have?
Road was built nineteen fifty.
Fifty?
About nineteen fifty.
I guess I'm not, I'm not really interested in pictures at all now because they conflict with each other. Be more interested with the record.
Ten foot reference line, that's what I have to look at. Seeing like reference, I, yeah, but then you go to the nine-one-one address, roads. There's one of those like Bison, for instance, that's, outside Baxter, it's nine-one-one address, it's private road. Basically, it's open ended, right there, there would be one, it's just private. From, I don't know what else to go off of, they're on our GIS.
So, I know these people don't wanna hear, well, come back and revisit this, but I'm wondering if we need to do some research in the deeds office?
Well, I would like to hear from Sarah. Um, she's of the opinion that it's a private road, I'd like to hear what that's, what the basis for that opinion is.
The basis.
While everybody is here.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna throw us right back to the veto.
But, yeah, I think that's ultimately where this is gonna have to go is pulling deeds back to nineteen fifty and see if the right-of-way was ever granted in any of these transfers.
What is the name of the road, southeast quarter mile?
Quarter mile.
Quarter.
This is George here, right?
Yes.
Who else is here on this, I don't know, we got the prices here.
The Clevengers were here.
Yeah, I've got you guys.
And the Gartners.
And you got Kings all the way at the end of it.
Cause they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes a circle.
So, according to our nine-one-one maps, which Rodney Sanders is still in charge of for this year, it shows that it's private. We said take picture, I just took picture of mine.
Well, I'm going by what you say.
Okay, yeah, according to his map.
Right.
And he's the one we're contracted with for now.
For nine-one-one purposes.
For nine-one-one purposes.
I think the best.
The best is for nine-one-one address, right?
Right, I think we've gotta do some research on the, in the deeds office, I don't know any way around it. Was start around nineteen fifty and look for.
Well, we need to find out a hundred percent for sure when it was built. I mean, we need to go back and find out exactly when the road was built, you know, we're just guessing nineteen fifty is what they're saying, so.
I don't know that that's gonna really matter much cuz it, it could've been cut yesterday or it could've been cut a hundred years ago. That right-of-way's gotta be recorded.
Well, it, it may make a difference for, for civil matters between all the parties involved on when it was built, but.
His father built that road, so you're not gonna find anything where the county built it.
He built the road, not gonna find what?
You're not gonna find, find anything where the county built that road because his father built that road.
Gonna come down to, I'm surprised, Sally, on the title, did you have any title searches here, you said?
Yes, uh, I think it's the second page, bottom of it says, except for ten feet of the road. But the other three, including theirs, and Clevenger does not mention the road, easement, right-of-way.
Again, that still doesn't mean that that's a county road, it could be accepted.
Right.
But, it makes me wonder why the title company didn't point this out.
Yeah, and I, I called her and asked her and I just went by ours out here in Columbus cuz that one had moved to Joplin. I called and talked to them last week and I talked to ours and she said, just to us, it means it's the road. It didn't flag anything besides we all know we don't own a road, you know, so typically it'll go to the middle of the road and we don't, isn't, we don't own it. Um, but, I mean, I guess the thought is, I, I, I'm not gonna speak for the families, um, gosh, you know, lawyers and surveys and whatever, but then, next month when it's all settled, they can do it again and it's just gonna be a constant, I wish we could just be neighborly and get along and not cause damage to vehicles and block emergency personnel. And if they built it and then sold off pieces, I mean, that, that would be the thought, is they must've, you must've owned all of it at some point. And then sold pieces off and didn't allow, I don't know.
Excess?
Yeah.
Makes more sense, right?
Um, Sarah's gonna go check too and pull the original blue line map, which the blue line maps are the maps that they make our GIS maps off of from the original, from way back. She's gonna go pull that blue line real quick and the blue line will usually say on there if it's private or what it is. So she's pulling that right now, we're gonna double check and get the old one to see.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
That road was built from a model that lived back there. The original road that comes in from Quaker, which the county owns, that runs up there, the original right-of-way. And it's still there, it's just been built up since my dad built that road from a model to come in. Now, for the reason that the county road was always muddied under and flooded, it's down low, it needed to build up.
And you're saying that that road is in what proximity to the rock road that we're driving on?
The county road, uh, originally was a pinch road, which is quarter mile road now, uh, before. It come in from Twin Gilmore's and Matt King's. Which at that, which at that time was, uh.
Off, off Swatch.
It comes off of Quaker. Which at that time was, uh.
You talking about this right here?
Yes, yeah, uh, it comes to us, the Gilmore's and. But it go back there to the Matt King's place.
Okay.
And it's still there, it just rolled up and my dad, it was always underwater, they wouldn't take care of it. That's when Cecil Gibson was commissioner and, uh, they wouldn't take care of it. So my dad, he was always pulling my awful out back there and he put the strap back in there and put the road down.
How does Ryan get to his property off that road?
Just saying my.
Do we have deed somewhere?
I still think no matter what that blue line says, we'll have to do some research. Jake? The subject to the easements and such, I mean, standard language, but that if any, it doesn't.
Right. Yeah, they would have to be in record. Quarter meters, I'm not great playing with states. Yeah. I don't know if that's the legal term, ours.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm wondering, you know?
I think that's probably a completely different track.
I was wondering if it's one of those, you know, we've taken a lot of that stuff, but a lot of them were for a form, but it was never about.
Right, well, I think this is probably my guessland somewhere completely different than what this is. This was from a divorce, so, is that couple owned up, you know, a couple lots in town where they had a house and.
They did.
This was empty land, right?
They did, yeah.
So that's what that, that is.
Hi, Robert. People heard you were coming today.
I guess, and you may not be to speak cuz your attorney's not here, but I think you called to make an offer on it the day after I accepted an offer, but you didn't mention that it was a private road, maybe it was your family cuz it was, it was on the corner. Like, I'm on the corner, I wanna buy it.
It's on our job to, for me to have information to anybody.
So it was on the market for sixty days, under contract pretty quickly, and no one said anything with the extra signs put out and then they close.
Has it ever made any difference?
It is warm in here, isn't it, Tony?
Mm-hmm.
Someone here thinks that maybe you're doing this all. When I sit down, like, they made it unbearable in here. Turned air off on us. Hear that? Yeah, it was off.
Feel better all day?
Just knowing they're going to fix it makes me feel better. Okay, so looking at this, it looks like the art maps are wrong. This is what we're talking about right here. That's on the original.
Is this sixty?
Yeah, yes.
Sixty, right there.
Yes.
And that goes all the way to, it's a half mile, right?
Yes. It's called a quarter mile road.
But it ends, it ends right there. Would that go to, yeah, just brings us like it shows there. It's a half mile.
Yeah, and it shows on there that this is there.
I hope this is right. This would be sweet. This, this is the...
That's the originals.
The originals, we just, because everything has transpired, I think we're going to have to find the history of that.
Yeah, see, I don't know that this really changes anything.
Oh, not today, for sure. Because we don't know where this came from.
Yeah, we don't know why they said, why they called it a county road.
Maybe that's just off our original, yeah.
I'm just going off the maps.
The original mylers would have had that on there, which is that was why they started doing that.
What year is this?
It should have it on there.
January eighty-six.
Is it a difficult process to make it a county road? Is that a difficult thing to do?
Well, we don't accept county roads that are in the shape that that's in. We might try to work with, I don't know, but it takes the cooperation of all of the property owners to give easements if it is.
Do you want us to make a copy of that section for you?
No, thank you. That was what we needed. We're just going to have to do some research now. Thank you so much.
Is that what you have?
What we need to do? Or do we need to leave it in somebody else's hands to do the kind of work, the research?
Well, that's what I'm trying to sort through in my head is if this is a issue for this board to address, right? But I guess in determining whether it's a county road or not.
It's really important for us, even though they have been out there grading and such, it, it needs to have some easements to, for us to even have the authority to be out there. So that needs to be cleaned up, but that's not the case. And I hope it is a county road, but I think we need to establish that.
Yeah, I think there's discrepancies back and forth.
And I feel like it's on us.
I was just looking for an answer. Is it private or is it public?
It's not, right. It's not something that we can as easily give an answer to, unfortunately.
Not today, but...
Right, because if, I mean, if you just take any forty acre section and somebody drives a grader through it and lays a rock down and makes a driveway, even if the county starts maintaining it at some point, that doesn't make it a county road. At some point, there has to be easements over to the counties and we're giving this to the county. It's part of the county's property. Now, except there's a host of other legal issues here that is not for this board to describe or to, to handle about whether there's prescriptive easements or easements of necessity or eminent domain issues or any of that. It's not for us.
I would be in favor of county paying for a title search to do that very thing to determine whether or not that's... What are your thoughts on that?
I think that would be prudent.
I would make a motion that we, well, should I specify the title company?
Can we get with Karen to say if there's any kind of easements attached to these?
I think we need more research on that, but probably beyond a third party.
I'm trying to think through the procurement process and will the appropriate process is going to be...
It's going to be less than five hundred, wouldn't it? I mean, it wouldn't think it'd be over five hundred.
Yeah, you wouldn't think. So yeah, I would just specify the title company. I'd put your cap out. Is that our limit, five hundred?
I need to be more than that.
I'll pay the excess.
Pardon?
I'll pay anything over five hundred.
Oh, Sally, you're a good source. What would a title search be?
Uh, title company, Jerry County would be, uh, security first. And they're four seventy-five, four seventy-five for a search.
Okay.
But I don't know if you're searching this property, you know what I mean, how many properties you're going to search. So four seventy-five is a search fee.
Yeah, okay. I would make a motion that we order a title search through first security for the half mile stretch there identified as quarter mile road to determine whether or not it is a county road.
Myra.
By title.
Security first, title.
What first?
Security first, title.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Karen. It's a, not the quick answer you hope for today, but we're moving forward. I really hope that turns out to be a county road. Unfortunately, I don't understand not wanting neighbors. I just, I can't get past that. Those neighbors are there. I don't know why people can't be just good neighbors, no matter how it turns out. But we'll order the title search and go from there. If it's determined it's county, we'll take care of it, continue to take care of it.
Fifteen hundred, sorry, eleven.
You should, well, a lot of people, mine out, sorry for your passing.
Oh, that'll be good.
Okay, welcome.
You guys sign in where we've got your numbers.
Out there, if there's a thing outside, if you could, if you, you wrote your name down, you could put your phone numbers beside that. That'd be great.
What are you doing, speaking about your ten minutes, right? Does anybody else have anything? Before we're going to go into executive session, anything else about regions matter? I would make a motion if we go into executive session, like Toby's up here for, for, uh...
What was your executive?
Not a life person, huh?
No.
To return at ten o'clock. Motion in a second, all of them, favor?